Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster. We are gathered here at the historic City Hall, originally in a state established, I'm sorry, built in eighteen forty-two by Colonel John K. Longwell. The city acquired this building in nineteen thirty-nine and it has since been the venue where the mayor and council conduct the city's business. One interesting fact about our city is that it was the first place in the United States to offer rural free delivery postal service that started. Anybody want to guess when without looking at my computer?
Oh.
Okay, here.
And already.
What year? Not you, you saw it.
Come on, Kevin.
Eighteen ninety-six.
You are the man. Absolutely. October first, eighteen ninety-six. The council typically convenes on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Please note that these meetings are open to the public here at City Hall and are also streamed live on the city's YouTube page as well as the Community Media Center's channel and website. We extend our gratitude to the media center for their partnership in ensuring public access to these meetings. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment and silence your cell phone or any other electronic device that may interrupt the meeting. Thank you. And now we begin, as we do every meeting, with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic which is famous, one nation under a cap, if it is law, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. Our copies of the agenda are available here in the front of the room for the gentleman in attendance who already has them. A closed session statement. Statement for the record. We had a closed meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty-five in accordance with the general provisions of the Article, Section three dash three oh six C two of the Anniquated Code of Maryland. And without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five at eight twenty P M pursuant to the general provision. Art article, section three, three oh five B seven to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The common council took no official action during the meeting. The closed meeting was adjourned at eight forty-two P M. We have one presentation this evening. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Okay, so this is the mayor's proclamation for Park and Recreation Month, July twenty twenty-five. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the city of Westminster, Maryland. And our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provides a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And the city of Westminster, Maryland recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Dr. Mary Becker, mayor of the city of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, do hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month, and the city of Westminster adopted this fourteenth day of July, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Do you like to say anything? I just wanted to thank you, mayor, and the entire city council for continuing to support the efforts of the Recreation and Parks Department. And we certainly take the words and this proclamation very seriously, and we hope that it's reflected in the work that we do every day.
Thank you. I'm sure we will see your phrases later in the meeting.
I don't think we're done with it yet.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, now we move on to approval minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve this evening. We have a set from the Mayor and Common Council Meeting Minutes of June ninth, the Mayor and Common Council Work Session Meeting Minutes of June sixteenth, and the Mayor and Common Council Meeting Minutes of June ninth, all above of twenty twenty-five. They have a motion to approve these minutes.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got Mr. Dayhoff with the motion and Mr. Peccararo with the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Well, now we move on to consent calendar. We have eight items on the consent calendar this evening. I will take a motion and then a second, and then I know that, well, I guess we would actually, you know, we have a couple of folks that have a conflict here. So, Mr. Peccararo, can you guide me through the motion with second first, or will we let them abstain? Well, thank you very much. So may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent.
Ms. Gilbert. And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Peccararo with the second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Dayhoff.
I'd like to abstain from voting on the consent calendar. I'm a member of the Gracelton Church Council that participated in the EWA for Cheddar's Act.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dayhoff. I'm interested.
Mr. President, I am also going to abstain in reference to, specifically in reference to item V, because I'm the manager of the property at Pretend Woodward Avenue.
Thank you very much. And noted. And will the clerk please note, I will vote on this, so we have a majority.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Thank you very much. Report for the mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a bit of a report. All right, we broke quickly. The council president threatened last week to bank a gavel of five minutes, so here we go. We haven't been in five weeks, so I have a bit to catch up on events that have taken place. Taking us back to Saturday, June fourteenth, in the morning, I emcee a weightlifting tournament in town called Deadlift for Dogs hosted at Westminster Strength and Conditioning. This event, consisting solely of the deadlift, is a fundraiser for American vet dogs, which helps pair service dogs to veterans. After the event, we was down the main street to enjoy beer and barbecue, which was a splendid event. The sun came out during the event and crowds swarmed Main Street for several hours. After the event, several of us were off later in the week to the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference in Ocean City, Maryland, which was during the heat wave. The conference this year provided a lot of opportunities for networking and education. I was able to catch up with friends and attend several sessions on leadership in municipal government. Monday's keynote speaker, Tim Schreiber, the chairman of the Special Olympics, spoke about dignity, and which was one of the best keynote speeches I have heard in a long time. While at MML, I, along with council member Peccararo and City Administrator Ms. Impulse and Luke Pinton, had the opportunity to sit down with the governor's staff to discuss upcoming requests from Westminster for the governor's budget. At MML this year, I was selected as a member-at-large of the MML Board of Directors and was reappointed to the Community Outreach and Engagement Committee for another year. On Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, on the way back from MML, Melanie and I stopped off at the governor's residence on our way to attend a reception for Pride Month and also so I could hand the governor the be kind sign I had at MML. Last week and this week are Common Ground Weeks at McDaniel College, a two-week celebration of traditional arts and crafts. Every evening this week, there are concerts in the Alumni Hall of McDaniel College. These are free to attend, and the concerts begin at eight P M. Speaking of concerts, the Sunday concerts are back in full swing. I, along with several other council members, attended the Bluegrass in Velgrove Square concert, which was wonderful and thoroughly enjoyed the evening. There was a concert last night at Wakefield, and next Sunday will be a concert, folk music at Kings Park. Wednesday, July ninth, I attended a collaborative working session at Magic as part of their Grow Rural Art Opportunity in Maryland project, a tri-county initiative designed to foster a thriving technology ecosystem within Carroll, Frederick, and Hartford Counties. Thursday, July tenth, I was able to meet with Maryland Secretary of the Environment, Serena McGilving, to thank the secretary for providing funding opportunities for Pure Water Westminster. It was very just, uh, just a few minutes, but I was thankful to Ms. Impulse, who was able to arrange some time for me to meet the secretary. The secretary is just as excited about Pure Water Westminster as we are. Friday, July eleventh, I attended a meeting with Kindness Week planners. As you know, Westminster hosts the Kindness Stroll in August, and in November, we highlight Kindness Week. The planning for both events is underway. On Saturday evening, this would be the twelfth, myself and the entire council, some of the staff that showed up were transported to Italy for our first Toast to Italy event. I just don't know what to say. It was absolutely phenomenal. From that evening through today, I have been hearing from attendees how wonderful this event was. I would like to offer my thanks to everyone involved in staging this event. We do great strolls in Westminster, but this event was different. It was all about enjoying food with families and friends, socializing, playing bocce ball, and listening to some amazing music. And I'd like to give a shout out to Jake Fine of Fine Tune Presents, who has been coordinating most of our music for the summer for the city, if not all of it. Comments range from "thank you, Westminster, for being so friendly and welcoming," "love the evening energy on Main Street, an outstanding surprise," to "it doesn't feel like Westminster, it feels cosmopolitan," and "it felt like we spent the evening in Italy in the piazza." Ms. Gruber, it was phenomenal. I just, I don't have any of the words to describe it. As I wrap up my comments, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate Chief Ledwell on his retirement in a few weeks and offer a thank you for being such an integral and important part of the Westminster community for over ten years. I have been incredibly honored to have served my first term as mayor with the chief at the helm of the police department. Chief Ledwell's community-based policing approach has become a model for the mid-Atlantic region. His dedication to the residents, the offices, the officers in the department and the city is unparalleled. Chief, you will be missed. And finally, I also wanted to congratulate Commissioner Adrosstein for being appointed as the Secretary of Maryland Department of Veterans and Military Families, as was announced earlier today by Governor Moore. Given his extensive experience and leadership, I'm sure he will fulfill his new role with passion and service. And that is all.
Good report. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we'll now move on to committees and liaisons. We'll start out with the Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I believe the mayor is our representative.
Oh, I'm the representative.
I apologize for finding my download is taking a bit of a PC and PC string.
And I had no report.
Perfect. But change my outline here. I probably have this all hosed up throughout the whole thing. Economic and community development. Mr. Huff, I think you're still.
I am.
I do not. Very important. Mr. Peccararo, Finance.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Okay, and then Personnel is you now. I didn't guess. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, but I do not have a comment on that. Take that.
Public Safety is still me, and I do have. On June tenth, several members of the Westminster Police Department, along with Councilwoman Gilbert and myself, participated in the annual Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run. Very nice affair, uh, and I know we both enjoyed being part of that. On June tenth, Lieutenant Steve Blackwell, who is the Acting Criminal Investigation Bureau Commander, graduated from the twenty twenty-five Carroll County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Carroll Class, which is a very small endeavor. I think that's about a year-long class, if I'm not mistaken, so that's wonderful. And on July second, Westminster Police Department offered Maryland-certified lateral police officer, Dylan, uh, is it Adel Malik?
Adel Malak.
Malak, thank you. A job with the Westminster, as a Westminster police officer. He'll start on July twenty-ninth. He actually comes to us from the Towson University Police Department and was a reference from one of our existing police officers, which is nice. It's that they're recruiting in other folks, so we love seeing that. All right. Let's move on to Public Works. And that is now, yeah. Mr. Peccararo?
I believe, um, Ms. Impulse, since who has the Public Works working directly right now, will have a more detailed update on activities in Public Works over the last few weeks, but I did want to say, and we all know this, and in a minute when I get to the council comment, I'm going to say one of those things about what she did, but I think we should never forget, you know, the tremendous job the Public Works guys do, doing these things together as well. I know they were out there working hard, and not just doing regular, I think we're giving out, they were helping pass out drinks and doing everything, and it was terrific to see, you know, those guys were, they're always working hard, and they keep the thing clean, neat, and everything gets set up the right way, but, you know, I think, you know, I sort of recognize the terrific job they did there as well. That's all I had, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we'll move on to Recreation and Parks, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes, as Pat, the mayor previously mentioned, the Toast of Italy was held on Saturday evening from five o'clock to nine. Um, the event included delicious food, beverages from local restaurants, kids' activities, Italian car displays, scooters and bike show, a Miss Little Italy pattern, and a cannoli even contest. I mean, I believe even the little statue in the corner was like the little, you know, topping on the cake. It was just perfect. Oh, and the glass blowing, the glass blowing was amazing. So you covered, it was like the devil in the details, like every single detail, all the way down to the flower arrangements on the tables and the umbrellas. It was wonderful. Despite the warm temperatures, the attendance was higher than predicted, and the event was a huge success. A lot of our vendors sold out of their items very early on, which definitely means it was a success. Everyone was having a great time. Beyond the Toast of Italy, July is also Parks and Rec Month, and the celebratory activities are in full swing. Several of the events have already taken place, such as RC Cards in the Park, Grass in Belgrove, Kids in the Kitchen, Wakefield Rocks, and Free Snowballs on Locust Lane. All have been well-attended so far and appreciated by the committee, and we are anticipating what's new to come. So, thank you very much to you and your entire staff, and that is my entire thoughts.
Ms. Gilbert, Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff.
Your report, sir.
Okay, well now we move on to council comments and discussion. Mr. Peccararo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I know we're going to talk, we'll talk about the Toast of Italy impact, but I just wanted to just add my appreciation, Ms. Gruber. You know, when, when you and I a couple of years ago kiddingly said to Ms. Gruber, so we have this Irish thing, where's the entire festival? And she said, that's a great idea, I'm gonna start thinking about it. And she thought about it for a while, and nobody had any idea how amazing it was. Uh, you know, she turned the whole concept, how we do these things around, you know, the evening event was brilliant. Uh, people came that never come to our events. Um, that's true, no, we had people that we anticipated, uh, and everybody I talked to, fabulous, only complaints I heard were that people weren't in town and moved.
That's true.
So, so, you know, hats off once again, just incredible job, you and your team, and all the city staff, you know, who worked on this, but, but, you know, thank you for your vision about how to make this work. It was really, really just incredible. Um, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Peccararo. Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I also want to congratulate the Westminster Police Chiefs, they're well-earned. They're much, well-deserved, though. Retirement, um, I will also say prayers for your wife, Victoria. I want to congratulate Mayor Mary Becker on being elected to the MML Board. It's a statewide election, and a lot of folks don't understand that. It's a statewide election. Um, I served for five years. It gives the city of Westminster a great opportunity to have a seat at the table and make things happen, and you're perfect for it. So I think that'll be a great asset for, um, the city of Westminster.
Thank you.
Um, I was excited, I was not able to go to the Wakefield Sunday series concert, but I'm really happy that you took advantage of my pavilion, and I think that's going to be a huge asset in the future. And I did hear from some folks that it would be a perfect wedding venue. I'm looking forward to, I'm really, I'm really looking forward to getting electric and Wi-Fi out there, and I think it's going to be a great asset, a great asset for the city. Want to congratulate Commissioner Rostein for being appointed to the Secretary of Maryland Department of Veterans. Um, as a veteran and a chair in the veteran with, with my colleague, Mr. Kavachi, I think he's going to do a great job for us. I really do. And we have a lot of exciting things coming up with Veterans Affairs, and that's good stuff. I love the Italian festival, um, the police department and Wrecking Parks and the Public Works. You know, when you go to those festivals in other towns, uh, the trash cans are overflowing, and all the details are just taken care of so well by our group, and I really super appreciate it. And that'll be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Appreciate that. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I kind of agree with the mayor. It seems like a long time since we last met, but it was five weeks, yeah. But it kind of was not quiet by any means, so I, along with the mayor and council member Peccararo, attended the summer conference. This time, I had a little different view of the conference since I had been on the Conference Planning Committee for the past year. Believe everyone had informative sessions, and it was great seeing the conference to fruition from a committee standpoint. Um, so that was a great experience. Once I returned home, I was the keynote speaker at Corbett's Charge and spoke Saturday on the twenty-sixth. July sixth, along with council members Dayhoff and Huff and the mayor, I enjoyed the beginning of the concert series at Belgrove Square with the Bluegrass. And then it was at Wakefield, as previously mentioned, last night. On the tenth, Covellent hosted another series of Shaken Not Stirred event that the Historical Society holds quarterly. These are really enjoyable, very casual, it was a fun evening. I encourage anyone who like to step out on Thursday night to join in the next time. And we've already mentioned Toast of Italy, and after the Toast of Italy, we were extremely busy in the town of Westminster on Saturday. There was a Veterans Initiative Benefit Concert at McDaniel College with Guy Davis, which I heard was an enjoyable evening. I unfortunately was not able to attend, but I heard it was a good event. That is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Huff?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't want to belabor things too much, because a lot of people have already kind of hit various points, but the one thing I will say about the Toast of Italy event, I, as you know, I love the strolls, uh, but we have three really good strolls. And the thing I really enjoyed about the Toast of Italy event was that it was very much brought a different vibe or energy than the stroll, um, so than our stroll. So I think that was, that was something I really enjoyed, just a different vibe, I don't know whether having it at night, having all the tables with the umbrellas on Main Street, but I really enjoyed the energy of that event. So, you know, once again, kudos to Recreation and Parks and everybody else in the city, whether that's Public Works or Public Safety, that is involved in, you know, all these events that we do. They're great houses.
That's it, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Huff. I'll just, I'll be brief. One, Chief, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Knew it was eventually coming, but sad to see it here, but I know we're fortunate enough to have you around to help us choose your predecessor or your successor, so that's wonderful. Um, and then just to echo everyone else's comments, I've already sent a couple of emails to staff related to this, but I think the one thing that I will say is, I've been on council since we started the very first event that was a stroll-type event, and this by far, in two days, I've received more feedback via text, email, in person, than any other event we've ever held. It's been consistent over the past forty-eight hours, hearing from people, texts and calls, just it's been unbelievable how it has impacted the community in such positive ways, so I'm grateful to staff, obviously Wrecking Parks, for all their work, so thank you. Well, now move on to bids. We have two bids on the agenda this evening. The first one is approval to waive the competitive procurement for good cause under the cities of Westminster's Code, Chapter thirty-six, procurement and contracts, subsection thirty-six dash four, specific regulations to purchase Microsoft software and licensing through SHI Government Solutions in the amount of one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. In May twenty nineteen, and again in May twenty twenty-two, the Mayor and Common Council approved the acquisition of a three-year Microsoft enterprise agreement through SHI Government Solutions. This agreement provided licensing for Office three sixty-five, email office applications, including Word, Excel, PowerPoint, et cetera, and necessary server licensing. The current agreement expires May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. SHI Government Solutions, the city's currently assigned authorized reseller, has a contract for the state of Maryland, contract zero zero one eight three six zero zero three three nine. This licensing is critical for the continued functionality of our officials, Westminster MD dot gov email system, the stability and security of our server infrastructure, and the provision of necessary Microsoft Office suite applications to city staff for their daily tasks. Staff have explored alternative solutions, however, based on our current infrastructure, compatibility requirements, and the integrated nature of our existing Microsoft environment, maintaining the enterprise agreement is of its effective and cost-efficient and cost-effective approach to our business needs. The FY twenty-six operating budget included seventy-five thousand dollars for this project. Staff recommends approval to waive benefit bidding for good calls under City of Westminster Code, Chapter thirty-six, procurement and contracts, subsection thirty-six dash four, specific regulations to purchase Microsoft software and licensing from SHI Government Solutions in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. I don't know if there are any questions.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's, let's get to a motion, get it on the floor, and then we'll have some discussion, or do you want, is this a staff way?
I'd like to clarify something before you get on the floor. The contract number that the state would be writing off of is correct, but I think it was read incorrectly. It's contract zero zero one B as in Bravo, three six zero zero three three nine, and I'd like that included in the record.
Absolutely, because I'm going to reference that in discussion, so.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the bid for one hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-seven cents to SHI? Motion to approve, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And now I'll open it up for discussion. I do have one point I want to make, and it's good that Ms. Impulse pointed that out, because I think we need, you know, this is a large dollar amount, but it's a little misleading because we're waiving the competitive procedure for good cause. However, this is competitively bid at the state level, and we're piggybacking off of that. So in no way, shape, or form have we just taken a shot in the dark. You know, this is, this has already gone through and been vetted out to get on to that so that we can piggyback at the state level, coupled with the fact that basically I think we're all agreeing, and if Mr. Moore says it's important, it's real. So that's my only comment. Any, any other discussion before I call for the vote?
Mr. President, it's also a multi-year contract.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I just note that because it's a multi-year contract, then we'll just have to budget for the additional years each year as we.
Thank you.
But that, but this contract amount is within the number we have budgeted currently.
Good point. Finance Director or Finance Chair, thank you. Finance Director or Finance Chair, thank you.
That should do it.
Yeah, we've got a finance director. You don't want that to hang on. Yeah. Okay. We'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of awarding the contract to S H I, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the contract is awarded. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the next item of business. It's the approval of change order number five to Wicker Sham Construction for exterior entranceway access improvements at Wakefield Clubhouse in the amount of twenty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars. Is that you, Ms. Imhals, or is that you, Ms. Gruber?
No, sorry, it's been Skirker.
Good evening. Wicker Sham Construction serves the general contractor for the Wakefield Valley Park Event Pavilion and Community Building renovation project. As the project approaches its final phase and site restoration begins, it has become clear that the existing brick pavers, railroad tie retaining walls and steps leading to the buildings are significantly deteriorated, uneven, and broken. These conditions present both aesthetic concerns and safety risk. To address these issues, change order number five proposes the complete removal of the brick pavers, retaining walls, and steps. In their place, the plan includes site grading, topsoil placement, grass seeding, and the installation of a new concrete sidewalk from the curve to the ADA compliant landing. This change order will increase the total project cost by twenty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars. However, the timeline completion will remain unchanged as the work will be conducted concurrently with existing punchless tasks. Funds will need to be allocated through a future budget amendment. Staff recommends that the mayor and council approve change order number five to Wicker Sham Construction for exterior entranceway access improvements at the Wakefield Valley Clubhouse in the amount of twenty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I have a motion to award the Wicker Sham, award the Wicker Sham, good Lord, award Wicker Sham Construction for a total of twenty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Mr. President, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. I have a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Gilbert, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? I I will make one quick point of discussion on this. He's spending money probably more than anybody up here, certainly equally, that's for sure. I have never liked the way that entrance looked when when they built that, when that building was built in the early nineties, I thought it looked atrocious the way they kind of had that all hacked together. And that was because it was built on the cheap. And I I I love the idea that you're going to get rid of that graded. It's going to look so much nicer for thirty K for what we're spending on that building. I think this is a great move. I think it's a smart move. Outside of the safety factor, which of course is important, but this is money lost spent. So it's going to look wonderful when you walk up there. I see all that. Any other comments or discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I note that you know, we'll need to find the funds for this because it's not, you know, in the budget. Where do we anticipate? I'm asking a lot of Ms. Imhals. Ms. Roger, where do we anticipate the funds coming?
Thank you, sir. We always start with the general fund. But it's possible that we may find other funding for this. So my answer to you is initially the general fund that frequently isn't, by the time we get the budget in the net for where where we'll be. That's where we start.
And, Mr. President?
Just, so now, what's our, what's our expected completion date for? For the budget, we'll, you'll find, you know, what would you do today?
Mr. President, we, we're not ready to answer that quite yet. And we have a new update from just a couple of weeks ago that I gave to council about some changes and some state requirements for the project as well. So we're still working on that. And we don't want to give a full state, but we're hoping by the end of the summer.
Thank you. And you all?
That's it, thank you.
Good point about the fun. Thank you for having me. Any other discussion related to this item? Hearing none, let's call a question. All those in favor of awarding Wicker Sham Construction the change order number five for twenty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the change order number five is awarded. Ordinance of resolutions, we have one this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. We have one ordinance to introduce for your consideration this evening is the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty five zero eight. An ordinance for the mayor and common council of Westminster, amending chapter A one seventy five fees. Article one, utility fees, section A one seventy five dash one, utility fees, charges, and costs adopted. Utility fee schedule established of the city code to increase the fees for water meters to reflect increases in the city's costs since the last fee adjustment.
Thank you, Ms. Imhals. And by the way, that's way better than hearing me read that.
Happy to assist.
Thank you, sir. Fees for certain water meters were last reviewed and amended by the mayor and common council in two thousand and eight. And of course, these are codified. The current cost of the water meter exceeds the amount that's codified in the code, which means that the city is currently subsidizing certain water meters. Ordinance two thousand twenty five dash oh eight amends the code to reflect current pricing. Staff recommends that the mayor and council introduce ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero eight. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and get it on the floor, and then we'll have some discussion. They have a motion to introduce resolution number twenty five dash oh eight. Ordinance, what did I say? Resolution, I apologize. Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty five oh eight.
So move, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Peckraro. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Now have some discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Peckraro?
So I'm all certainly in favor of adjusting our fees to to make sure the city's not losing money on these. It's been our practice over the years to have you know, increases in fees reviewed by the finance committee before they come to the full council. So perhaps we could try to have a finance committee meeting before this comes back, so we could take a look at this and then be able to report back to you.
Okay, so do we want to move forward? Are you suggesting not to?
No, we can introduce here.
Understood. That makes sense. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a question. I just wanted to have clarity on this. Are these for, are these charges for new water meters, obviously, right? But what about when you're replacing a water meter, if you're replacing a water meter in kind, like the size is the same? For some reason, is this charge happening as well?
So that's exactly, you're in the finance committee, and that's exactly why I suggested to finance committee have this conversation before we bring it to everybody so we can look into things.
Okay. So I have some questions about that. Okay, okay.
Are you okay?
Yeah, sure. We're introducing. Okay.
Yeah, any other discussion? I'll just comment that, yeah, I like that idea, Mr. Peckraro. I think that's good. Take a look at that. And it doesn't really slow us down because we're going to go forward with the introduction anyway. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash oh eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is introduced. If no unfinished business, is there any unfinished business that I'm not aware of? And we have no new business, so we'll go along to departmental reports. Ms. Imhals?
Thank you, sir. I want to echo all of your comments about a great event on Saturday for the Italian Festival. The staff was out there, I think, as early as nine AM. And that team staff was there till midnight cleaning up. So it's a very long day. The staff involved in preparing that event, obviously, is the Recreation and Parks Department, but also as Councilmember Peckraro indicated, the Streets Department, as well as other Public Works employees who volunteered for the day. The IT department helped to get us set up so that we can charge separate fees. Anytime we have fees involved, the finance department is definitely involved as well. And and on and on and on. So it's, it takes a full staff event to put on any particular. Sorry, a full staff in order to put on any particular event. I want to take a moment to thank all of those who were involved in making this an extremely successful event. So thank you. I had an opportunity to go to the city pool a couple of times this summer. It's been packed every single time I've been there. It seems to see a lot of people that are really enjoying it, and I've I've seen a lot of people that I know, a lot of staff members that have been there as well. So thank you for, you know, putting that in place in the last four years. I really appreciate that. All right, so let's start with the Department of the Day, Ms. Gruber. As always, thank you for your your efforts in putting on what everyone thinks that was spectacular at that.
Of course. And again, we can't do it without your continued support and the support of all of my colleagues and staff members. So very much appreciated all of your efforts leading up to this. There are so many details that go into it. To a check request from finance for startup money, to printing signage in the IT department, to the support from Public Safety to make sure that our guests are safe and abiding by all of our rules and laws in the city. And then the Streets Department, who literally never says no. We throw the craziest ideas out at them. And they sit there and they have the can do spirit and they're like, yeah, we can do that. And they have every right sometimes to be like, are you crazy? We're not doing that. And that is never the response. And so I think sometimes they're sorry after the fact, but I think the end result is something that everybody can be proud of. And I just thank you again for your continued support. I also want to give a shout out to our summer seasonal staff who have been holding it down in some very challenging conditions this summer. It's been one of our hottest, most humid summers on record, I think, maybe not really by the record. Rick could give me some insight onto that, into that statement, but we've had to make a lot of changes for our summer camp to get them into spaces that are air conditioned, to keep them engaged in safe activities in cooler spots. And of course, our lifeguarding staff who can't hide from the heat, and they are out there every single day managing record crowds at the pool. They have been just exceeding my expectations. I stopped, checked in with all of them today, and they seem in very good spirits. And our summer camp staff are in the same good mannered, good natured you know, mindset, and they're just there showing up every day to make memories for the kids that are attending our day camp. And I think that that shows with the enormous waiting list that we have for each and every week that we offer this summer. So a big shout out to our summer seasonal staff who are bringing it every day and making the department proud with their conduct and their can do attitudes as well. So that really concludes my report, other than please join us tomorrow in Lucas Lane for free snowballs. Last Tuesday, we served four hundred in one hour. So I hope we don't beat that tomorrow, but maybe we will. So yes, please stay tuned to our Facebook page for all of our July activities. They are great. And as you mentioned, we did have a concert on Saturday or Sunday night at Wakefield. Had over a hundred attendees. And then we also had another event at Wakefield today. It was our Fly Wham! event. So this was Westminster Aeromodellers, and they did an RC plane activity with youth that could sign up for this event. It was very successful. And they had so much fun partnering with us. They would like to come back and be present at Fall Fest in our kids' zone. So hopefully they'll get to interact with them again if you missed today's activity. That ends my report unless there are questions.
Are there any questions for the Recreation and Parks Department? Thank you, Ms. Gruber. We're moving on to the HR Department.
Ms. Imhals, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I have no report.
Thank you. Any questions for the HR Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the IT Department.
Thank you, Ms. Imhals. I'll give it short. I just want to shout out to my team. We've been really busy, both on the G I side and the I T side. We've got lots of projects still on. New equipment coming in, as you have some of this on the table. But we're, they've been working really hard on these new tickets and things coming in to keep us going and it's just our daily day to day that we do. So I just want to say thank you to them. We've been getting things done and having a good time. Well, I have a few other questions.
Yes, not so much a question, just a comment. I just want to say thank you for the new technology that we have up here. I find this that I had much easier to carry around and utilize than a laptop that I had previously. So I've had some fun exploring it. Still learning things, but as we all are, maybe you got here. But I did want to say thank you for upgrading that technology. So I really appreciate it. That's all.
All right, we'll move on to the Public Works update. The Public Works has been extremely busy in the last, since we've met five weeks ago. They've prepared, executed, and cleaned up for Art in the Park, Pickle in the Park, Beer and Barbecue Stroll, A Taste of Italy, the Employee Picnic, the Bell Grove Concert in the Park, as well as the Concert at Wakefield, traffic control for the July Fourth fireworks. And they also installed pedestrian warning crossing systems to Home of Farm Road and Windsor Drive. Are there any questions from the Public Works Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Housing Department. Ms. Brack?
Very much. I have two items that I want to report on tonight. The first is the BRAP five year plan. Housing agency is required to prepare a five year plan. And this five year plan outlines the agency's goals, mission, and objectives for serving low, very low, and extremely low income families over a five year period of time. It also details progress that was made in achieving the goals set in the previous five year plan. Our agency is in a classification where we only have to do this once every five years. Some agencies have to do it five years plus each year. So we're in a classification where we're not required to do that. We are classified as a high performing agency, meaning that we are, we are the top in terms of the ratings. The agency's draft five year plan was submitted in mid-April through the HUD portal. HUD has seventy five days, calendar days from the date of the submission to approve or reject the plan. If they fail to do that, then it's automatically approved. In a letter dated June twenty fifth of twenty five, HUD advised us that they could not approve the draft plan in the required timeframe. And then they provided us a list of deficiencies to correct, including the need to conduct a public hearing on the draft plan. Their initial timeframe was August the twenty ninth. So we knew that it was not possible to do all that needed to be done within that period of time. So we requested an extension until September the eighteenth, which they readily granted. The notice of public hearing that HUD is requiring has been prepared and will appear in the Carroll County Times on July eighteenth. The notice and the draft five year plan will be available on the website as well as in the housing office on July the eighteenth. A public hearing is expected to be held during the September eighth council meeting. Written comments will be accepted until close of business September the twenty, September the fourth of twenty twenty five. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the mayor council may have about the draft five year plan. Now, the second item I want to report on is the administrative plan. The administrative plan is the, the Housing Choice Vouchers basically guidebook or how we operate. It's our operational manual, as you will. Every housing authority that operates a housing choice voucher program must have one, and then it must keep current. There have been revisions that in regulations that HUD has over the last two or three years, they've made some changes, and then they keep moving the deadline. And so now we're at the point where I think they've sort of settled on a date. So at this point, we're going to make those changes. But it requires that we have a period for public comment. And most of the changes we are, we're proposing has to do with complying with what's called the Housing Opportunity through Modernization Act of twenty sixteen, commonly called H A M A. The changes are being imposed that we're proposing will will better organize the plan's content. And just to give you a synopsis of what we are proposing, there's one chapter that we, we are changing, just carving it out. there's one chapter that we we will change it, just carving it out separately to to better uh delineate the fair housing and equal opportunity provisions in the plan. We're also adding new local goals, including one to conform with the the national standard uh for physical inspection of real estate. Uh, the acronym is INSPIRE. We renumbered the chapters on eligibility for admissions, changing it from two to three because we added another chapter or something like that. We also reorganized and clarified the eligibility requirements for admissions, including the definition of family and household member composition, heads of household, dependents, full-time students, living age, and ineligible families. We reorganized chapter seven and clarified the policies on how family income is determined at admission and reexamination for eligibility. We define annual income to conform with the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Acts. We renumbered chapter, we proposed proposed to renumber chapter ten and changed the title to conform to the National Standard for Physical Inspection of Real Estate. And chapter twelve, we're are ammending, proposing amendment best session to basically uh redefine re- reexamination to conform with the the uh with with the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act. The changes will require a public comment period. A notice announcing the proposed changes and opening the comment period commencing on July the eighteenth and concluding on September the eighth of twenty-twenty-five at the council meeting. Just for the record, the last change we made to the admin plan was in December of twenty-twenty-one. So it's a lot that has happened. So it's been several years, there's been some changes uh that's necessitated by the changing regulation. And then you also use this opportunity just to clean up and reorganize some things in the plan. And I'll be happy to ask any question that the mayor council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Housing and Community Planning Department. It's Mr. Beanbo.
Thank you. Um, my department was part of the four hundred people that enjoyed the snowballs. We'll be happy to be there tomorrow as well. With that.
Is that?
No, no. Am I ever that?
No, no.
The Board of Zoning Appeals July first meeting was canceled as there were no applications for the board. On July second, the Historic History Commission accepted the one-seven-four East Main Street Historic Structures Report for the proposed demolition of a rear um addition, as well as some uh work on the front porch. And they continue the two-nineteen East Main Street Historic Structures Report for the demolition of an enclosed rear porch. In addition, the H T C continued its discussion on the nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth preparations. On July seventeenth, the Planning Zoning Commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing for resolution twenty-five oh six for property located before, resolution twenty-five oh six for annexation number eighty-seven for property located at ten-twelve Baltimore Boulevard. Mayor and common council introduced resolution twenty-five oh six on May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Also, uh, scheduled to hold a public hearing for ordinance twenty-two-five oh one Automobile Use Text Amendment. Mayor and common council introduced ordinance twenty-two-five oh one on June ninth, twenty-twenty-five. And I just learned today that the July bit bug release at City Hall was rescheduled to July seventeenth. So it'll still be at City Hall and still at ten AM. And that completes my report.
Are there any questions for the Planning Director? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Ms. Mals. Good evening. Uh, just a quick report. Um, the Finance and Housing Departments are preparing for our fiscal twenty-five preliminary audit that includes our single audit, and that will take place July twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, so next week. And the Finance and I T Departments are also collaborating and preparing to begin the upgrade of the city's E R P system, which will kick off in August. The upgrade is estimated to take approximately two years to finish all of our modules. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the Finance Director? Uh, let's move on to the Police Department, and I want to take a moment to thank the Police Department who showed up in uh great force on Saturday for the event. I feel like I saw a ton of officers there. Um, so thank you for that. They're also involved in planning the event as well, making sure, as Ms. Gruber indicated, that the event is put put on safely. And so I wanted to thank the officers for that. I also want to extend our very great gratitude to Chief Ledwell and as he moves forward with his retirement uh on September first. Ledwell?
Appreciate it. Uh, good evening, Mayor Council. Um, as of July first of this year, the uh bodyguard camera um used by police officers who have regular contact and members of the public becomes mandatory. We've had our program in place now for several years, but uh the mandate kicked in July one. Um, we're currently working with Dick's Sporting Goods Management uh on some product prevention strategies. Um, we've seen an uptick in um group shoplifting thefts there, and so we're we're working with them and um the regional team to try to do a little target hardening and prevention. Um, we are participating uh again this summer in an event or a uh activity that's sponsored by Exploration Commons called Baking with the Badge, uh where some of our officers work with some of the youth in the community on a baking project. I participated last year, it was it was a good time. Um, so we're doing that again, and this week is Camp Cops. Um, and we are participating in it. Like, that concludes my report. Should have pressures.
Are there any questions for the Police Department?
Yeah, I asked a question. Um, how are we going with um the scooter initiative? I'm still getting lots of complaints, and I've witnessed a couple of awkward moments.
We are enforcing it, providing education, a lot of enforcement stats that I'll provide through the city, I'm sure uh shortly, but our um initiative is ongoing, good, very active, good. And and we uh we found that there are quite a number of electronic devices and um in doing a little research, it seems that even the like the universities are struggling with coming up with good um policy and allowing uh the transportation method, which is fairly popular to continue, but we're working on it.
Another, another question. I'll second. Um, when is the Baking with the Badge event? That was up last year. That was great. I'll have to look up today. Okay. If we can be advised at the date, it was a great event. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mals.
Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you, Ms. Mals. My little agenda is citizen comments, during which we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues related to tonight's agenda or private other city matters. For those not attending this public meeting, we welcome your comments via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. All emailed comments will be shared with the mayor and council. Please include your address and phone number with your comments. We will now invite comments from those present this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the mayor and council. Our role at this point is to listen to your comments and respond appropriately after consultation with staff and each other. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to be heard? You're it.
Pretty bummed I missed the Little Italy event.
You are. Um, okay, so hearing no other comments, I uh that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, July twenty-eighth. And with that, and without objection, we are adjourned.